Good evening and welcome to the Monday, September 9th, 2024 Regular Meeting of the Rochester Hills City Council. There are blue public comment cards in the back. If anybody's here to make public comment and wishes to make public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, please complete one of those public blue public comment cards handed to Ms. Whisperin', and we will make sure that we call on you at the appropriate time. As always, please remember, public comments are limited to three minutes. Ms. Whisperin', if you would please take the roll.
Good evening, President Deal. President Deal?
Here.
Vice President Walker?
Here.
Mr. Blair?
Here.
Mr. Carlock?
Here.
Ms. Moreland?
Here.
Ms. Mangioli?
She is absent with prior notice.
Ms. Newbauer?
Here.
President Deal, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Now, if everyone will please rise, and our youth council representative will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda. I have not been made aware of any requests to modify or alter the agenda in any way. We have a motion by Mr. Carlock, seconded by Vice President Walker, to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none. The agenda is approved unanimously. Moving on, we have council and youth committee reports. We're going to send it over to Aaron from the youth council to give us a little report on what they're doing.
Good evening, President Deal, Mayor Barnett, council members, and citizens of Rochester Hills. My name is Aaron Yun, and I'm a senior at Rochester High School, and this is my fourth year on the government Youth Council, and I serve on the Water and Sewer Committee. This past month, the youth council has elected our new officers for the new term, with Uniwu being elected as our secretary, Janelle Hayes as our vice chair, and Sid Cheff as our chairman. We also assigned members to new committees and DIAS assignments for the first half of the term. This month, we are participating in the Wake Me Up Before You Go Go 5K run at Blumer Park, as well as helping out at a magical state of the city. While we haven't decided on any projects yet, we are going to continue planning with projects to that Rochester Hills Government Youth Council can participate and create so that we can interact with our citizens of Rochester Hills. Our next meeting will be at Wednesday, October 2nd, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Vice President Walker?
Thank you, President Deal. Our friends over at the OPC Social and Activity Center have a couple of events coming up worth noting. They're telling us that tickets are still available for the OPC's annual Oktoberfest on September 12th from 4:00 until 7:00 p.m. The event includes live music, dancing, and a cash bar with beer, wine, and refreshments. Tickets are $10 and includes a homemade pretzel. A limited number of German food tickets are available. This event is open to the public and is fun for all ages. Call the OPC for tickets or more information. Thank you for the presenting sponsor, or thank you to the presenting sponsor, Lake Michigan Credit Union. We also want to save the date, Thursday, September 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for OPC's annual 50-plus Expo. Over 90 local service providers will be on hand, offering valuable information and resources in many areas such as retirement living, caregiving, finances, wellness, technology, and more. Flu shots will also be available from Oakland County Health Division. Admissions and parking are free with great raffle prizes and vendor giveaways. Shuttle service from St. Paul's United Methodist Church is available. Thank you to the presenting sponsors, Ageways, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Next Step for Seniors, Pixley Funeral Home, and Pomeroy Living, as well as all the other sponsors who make this informative expo possible. This is an event you won't want to miss. Thank you, President Deal.
Very good. Thank you very much. Mrs. Moreland?
Thank you, President Deal. I do have a flyer. Unfortunately, I'm not able to pull it up, but I wanted to let everyone know that the movie Screenagers is going to be available for viewing at the Avondale High School. It's going to be held in their auditorium September 24th at 7:00 p.m. It's sponsored by the Avondale Youth Assistance, and this is a movie that is great for parents. It's talking about screens, so TV screens, phone screens, computer screens, iPad screens, all of that stuff, and the effect that it has on our young people, and it just gives you some tips and just some different ideas for managing that with our youth. So I encourage anyone to attend that has kids or grandkids or hopes to have kids or grandkids. So September 24th, 7:00 p.m., Avondale Youth Assistance is sponsoring this. It's at the high school. For more information, you can call Avondale Youth Assistance at (248) 852-3716. Hope to see you there.
Very good. Thank you very much for that. I don't see any other council or committee reports, so we will move on to public hearings. Item number 2024-0372, Public Hearing for the City of Rochester Hills Fiscal Year 2025 Proposed and 2026 to 2027 Projected Budget Plan and the Proposed 2024 Millage Rates. At this time, I will take a moment to open it up for public hearing. I guess we'll actually, you know what, before we do that, I'm going to let Mr. Snyder go ahead and introduce this item, and then we will open it up for a public hearing.
You got it. Then I'll roll it right to you. Well, thank you, President Deal, Vice President Walker, City Council, Mayor Barnett, and Mr. Yun. Well, about a month ago, on August 12th, the City of Rochester Hills 2025 to 27 Proposed Budget was submitted to City Council per city charter at the first City Council meeting in August. Then a week later, on August 19th, Rochester Hills City Council held a budget workshop, which was open to the public, where each department presented their upcoming budget plans, and city staff were available for any questions or comments on their respective budgets. So tonight, we're here for the public hearing portion of the annual budget process to provide an additional opportunity for public comments. So tonight, we're going to hold two separate public hearings. The first is City of Rochester Hills Proposed Budget Plan, and the second will be the City of Rochester Hills Winter 2024 Millage Rates. So the first public hearing scheduled for tonight is City of Rochester Hills Fiscal Year 2025 to 27 Proposed Budget Plan. I have received no further comments nor questions on the city's proposed 2025 to 2027 Proposed Budget Plan since the budget workshop from either the city council nor the general public. So with that, I'll request that City Council open the public hearing on the City of Rochester Hills Proposed 2025 to 27 Budget Plan, and I, as well as representatives from each of the city departments, are here and available if there are any questions or comments on the proposed budget plan.
Very good. And with that, we will open the public hearing on the 2025 Proposed and 2026 to 2027 Projected Budget Plan and the Proposed 2024 Millage Rates. I don't have any blue public comment cards from any members of the public, nor do I see any members of the public approaching the podium or looking as if they wish to speak on this item. So I will then, at this time, go ahead and close the public hearing, and we will then, I think, at this point, move on to our next item, which would be
The next would be
2024-0396, the adoption of the winter 2024 millage rates.
Correct. And just to button that up, we will be presenting the proposed budget plan for City Council approval in two weeks at your next meeting. So the second public hearing scheduled for tonight is regarding the city's proposed winter 2024 millage rates, and this will provide funding for the City of Rochester Hills, OPC RAR, and the Rochester Hills Public Libraries Fiscal Year 2025 budgets. These are the millage levies which will be included in the winter 2024 tax bill and will provide funding for fiscal year 2025. Tax bills will be sent out somewhere around December 1st of this year. Now, the bottom line millage rate as proposed sets the city's overall millage rate at 10.8473, and this is a bottom line millage rate increase of .39 mil from the bottom line city millage rate which was approved last year. Now, that .39 mil increase is directly attributable to the recent approval by voters of the new library millage, which will begin next year. Now, this millage rate does still keep the City of Rochester Hills as among the lowest millage rates in all of Oakland County. In fact, that 10.8473 would set the City of Rochester Hills currently as the third lowest millage rate among all cities in Oakland County with a population of over 3,000 residents. I'm not sure if City of Novi or City of Troy have anything on their ballots this year. I guess we'll just wait and see. Also included in the resolution tonight are the special lighting levies for the Christian Hills and Denison Acres subdivision. And so with that, I'll request that City Council open a public hearing on the City of Rochester Hills Proposed Winter 2024 Millage Rates, and if City Council is comfortable with the proposed millage rates after the public hearing, it is requested for City Council to approve the winter 2024 millage rates, which will enable the city to provide its millage rates to Oakland County Department of Equalization prior to October 1st. And I am available for any questions that you may have.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder. With that, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on the adoption of the winter 2024 millage rates. Once again, Ms. Whisperin', I don't believe we have any blue public comment cards on this item, and further, I don't see any members of the public approaching the podium or looking as if they wish to speak on this item this evening, so we will, at this time, go ahead and close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the council table for motion for a resolution to adopt the millage rates. And we do have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mrs. Moreland. I don't see any discussion on the millage rates, and with that, I will read the resolution into the record. Resolve that the city council hereby adopts the tax rates in accordance with Chapter 4 Taxation, specifically Section 4.1 Power to Tax and Secure Revenue, and Section 4.2 Charter Tax Rate and Special Voted Millages Limitation, to be levied in December 2024 to provide the tax revenues included in the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget as they appear in your packet. The total millage rate of 10.8473 per thousand dollars of taxable valuation as equalized, and be it further resolved that the city council hereby adopts the following special lighting levies for the Christian Hills subdivision at the rate of $17.16 per lot or description, and for the Denison Acres subdivision at the rate of $5.55 per lot or description, and be it further resolved that the assessor of the City of Rochester Hills be and hereby is authorized to have said amounts spread over the winter 2024 tax rolls. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, City Council. See you in two weeks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Snyder. Now, we are on to public comment for items not on the agenda. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to make comment on items that do not appear on our agenda this evening. I don't have any blue public comment cards, and I do not see any members of the public here wishing to speak this evening. Going once, going twice. We will close public comment for items not on the agenda, and we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If any council member or citizen requests discussion of an item, it will be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion. I have not been made aware of any requests by any citizen or council member to remove an item from the consent agenda. We have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mr. Carlock, to approve the consent agenda, and now pursuant to our rules, I will read each one of these consent agenda items into the record. 2024-0417, Request for Purchase Authorization Communications Blanket Purchase Order for the city's telecommunications services, including voice, data, cable, TV in the amount not to exceed $70,000 through September 30th, 2025. White Open West Inc., Madison Heights, Michigan. 2024-0419, Request for Approval of a Traffic Control Order SS-156-24 to Establish Traffic Control Measures Along Streets Within the Cumberland Hills Subdivision. Yield to Stop Sign Change, Section 27. 2024-0420, Request for Traffic Control Order SS-157-24 to Establish Traffic Control Measures Along the Streets Within Avon Lake Subdivision. Stop to Yield Sign Change, Section 25. 2024-0421, Request for Approval of the Traffic Control Order Number PK120-24. No Parking Within Right-of-Way Along Donnelly Avenue from Auburn Road Southerly for 250 Feet Between the Hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. from Monday to Friday. And the following six legislative files are relative to Walton Oaks. 2024-0423, Request for Acceptance of the Water Main Easement from Paul Karis for Walton Oaks on Parcel Number 15-07-376-039. 2024-0424, Request for Acceptance of the Sanitary Sewer Easement from Walton Oaks LLC, a Michigan Limited Liability Company for Walton Oaks, Parcel Number 15-7-376-038. 2024-0425, Request for Acceptance of the Water Main Easement Granted by Walton Oaks LLC, a Michigan Limited Liability Company for Walton Oaks. 2024-0426, Request for Acceptance of the Turnaround Easement Granted by Walton Oaks LLC, a Michigan Limited Liability Company for Walton Oaks. 2024-0427, Request for Approval of a Stormwater Sewer System Maintenance Agreement between the City of Rochester Hills and Walton Oaks LLC, a Michigan Limited Liability Company for Walton Oaks. 2024-0428, Request for Approval of a Maintenance Agreement for Maintenance and Repair of Private Road Between the City of Rochester Hills and Walton Oaks LLC, a Michigan Limited Liability Company for Walton Oaks. With that said, all those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none. The consent agenda passes unanimously. And that moves us on to legislative and administrative comments. Do we have any legislative and administrative comments from council this evening? We'll get started with Mrs. Newbauer.
Thank you, President Deal. I just wanted to thank everybody who showed up for the blood drive that was organized by the Bebo family yesterday. They were able to, they had so many appointments, they actually had to turn people away. So they had 81 appointments, and they were able to collect 73 units of blood, which helped 219 people. So we encourage people to continue their efforts in donating to the Red Cross. If you can't donate blood, you can always take cookies and crackers and juice and whatever it is that you can do and just support the people who are there donating. We also have some more things that we're doing to try to support the families that were impacted by the splash pad, and that will be coming up in the next couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other members wishing to have any legislative or administrative comments this evening, so with that, I'm going to kick it over to Mayor Barnett.
Super ready for that. Good evening, President Deal, and to members of the council, thank you for quick movement on the budgets, and I also want to recognize all the directors that are here and some of the other folks who were standing in their director's stead, because we obviously want to make sure we're here to answer any questions from the public or any questions as a part of this process, so thank the team for being here. Two quick things just to announce at the beginning, that I don't have pictures for Christine, you can throw my slide up if you don't mind. One is, obviously, it's the start of school, and that means a lot of things to a lot of people, but one of the things that we always want to make sure that means around here is that people are safe, that they're driving slow, that they're being extra cautious. In school zones, we have almost every school building in the Rochester Community School District is in Rochester Hills, and so it's really important. Our Sheriff's Department does a great job. We're always communicating. We do several videos to make sure people know that school's starting, there's new traffic patterns, and you know, things that you drive down a certain road, it changes when school starts and exits, so I want to make sure people are cautious about that. That's the most important thing, whether you're a minute or too late to wherever you're going, the most important thing is that you're safe, especially for our students. We've had a lot of near misses in the past, we want to make sure that people are cautious. That being said, one other thing that I had mentioned, I had a really great podcast on Friday that will, I think, air sometime this week with the two superintendents of Avondale Community School District, Dr. Schwartz and the new superintendent, Nick Russo, from Rochester Community Schools, both talking about their career paths and what a new year means to them, and some of the challenges in education now and sort of their perspective. So if you haven't ever tuned into the podcast, it's an interesting one, pretty timely given the events around our community. So now, back to some of the other events, since we're sticking with school. I was at the OPC today, and I mentioned to the folks there on Mondays with the mayor, if you haven't come out to a football game in our community on a Friday night, you really should, whether you're an Adams fan, a Stony Creek fan, or a Rochester Falcon. Friday night football is pretty cool in this community, and this past weekend was the Falcon Frenzy, which had our DPS team, our fire department, our sheriff's department out. All the feeder schools for Rochester Community Schools were there. Thousands of people watched Adams beat Rochester for the 200th year in a row, but it's a lot of fun, it's a great event, it's a couple bucks to get in, and you get to see some of the great things about what makes our community so special, and one of the reasons, of course, the Roderger kids were there as well, and they weren't in trouble, which was great, which I thought was unique, so I wanted to snap a picture of them not smoking or something, but it's always a fun event. The Adams Gold Rush is coming up next week, Stony Creek has one coming up as well, so get out and watch the students play football, the dancers and cheer teams perform, the bands perform, it's hundreds and hundreds of kids, families out there, a lot of fun. This weekend, of course, I want to thank our friends at the Paint Creek Center for the arts, for a wonderful art and apples festival. We were down there in the City of Rochester, helped kick it off with Mayor Bixson. Obviously, you see a couple recognizable faces there, Mr. Walker, Mr. Deal. Perfect weather. I know they did really well. I was down there, I think I saw some of you down there, I saw some of your social media feeds, know that you're down there as well. Also, another really great thing that makes community interesting and fun is events like this, I think one of the top 50 juried shows in America, which is pretty impressive, so we thank our friends from Paint Creek for a great festival. This is what a rope bridge looks like as it is nearing completion. I promise you, there will be more than one board across it. That's a challenging rope bridge there, and you can see, it's getting a little bit better. It's taking shape each and every day. We hope to have it done about a month from now, maybe sooner, but this is going to be really cool. I mentioned this at the OPC, our council knows this, we thank you for your support. This will unlock 40 acres of trails and quiet, restful walks and connections with nature to mostly places that people have never seen in our community, so really excited to see that come to fruition and start to actually look like something you could walk across. Want to update the council on this project, Barclay Circle, which, as you know, we tried something sort of unique to put bike lanes in, narrow the road, it was as wide as Rochester Road, so we narrowed it, put some bike paths in. This is the most densely populated area of our city. All the condos, if you look at the whole city, this is it, and it worked really well, but we got some complaints, council did too, you probably saw some of the social media feeds, about the intersections in particular, that we had eliminated some of the abilities to turn left and right unless the car in front of you was turning left or right. Well, good news. I wouldn't be showing this if we didn't have good news. We're making some changes with our consultants to the intersection areas that will still protect the bike lanes, but will also allow full turn movements, which should take care of literally every one of the complaints we got, which was, I can't turn right, I can't turn right on Auburn unless the car in front of me turns left. So this is, it's a very easy fix, it's just some paint, and Bill Fritz out there repainting and scrubbing off some paint, but it's a fix that should be done in a couple of weeks, and that should be back to normal. I think a good indication of the community, you know, listening to its residents and making some changes pretty quick out there. Tomorrow, we will kick off a fun event that the Planning and Economic Development Team is working on. This is called the Rise Cup, and those are some of the teams that are participating. You see them around you. Really great idea from the team to come up with a way to engage our businesses in unique ways, which I think is something that our team has done really well, and it really pays off when you see the connections they have. It's a four-part challenge, there's a trivia night at a local restaurant, there's a charitable giving component, a creative part to help celebrate our birthday, and of course, the start is this kickoff at the CAF Barn tomorrow between 11:30 and 1:30, where they'll get their kind of marching orders, food trucks there, should be a lot of fun again. I think another cool example of the city doing some unique things to engage that most of their communities would never even think of, our team is out there making it happen and really appreciate them. The next day, obviously, is September 11th. Totally different from the previous event, this is a solemn, professional, just really well-done event that the Rochester Fire Department does every year. If you have never been, I know all the council have been out there, but if you're watching at home, 9 o'clock, if you want to join us, it's a one-hour service at the most. It is poignant, it is professional, it is respectful. We have a piece of the steel from the World Trade Centers there, World Trade Center out in front of the fire station, and it will be, as always, a way to recognize those that gave the ultimate sacrifice, and just also a thank you to our first responders that are there as well. So that is Wednesday, September 11th at 9:00 a.m. Another event this week, it's an event of weeks, it's a week of events, let's try that again. This is the Wake Me Up Before You Go Go 80s-Themed 5K Fun Run, with all proceeds going to help and support the Brooklyn Splash Pad Fund. As you know, it's our city's 40th birthday, 1984. Some of our directors were here, which is fun to point out, and it's a chance for us to get together and have a little fun, and Maria is going to make me show you this video. My sound is on over here.
Exit out real quick and go to the regular sound on your computer.
I love we're still right here.
I know.
What?
Exit out of it first.
Mm-hmm.
Can you go down here and let me hear your sound? Oh, wow, okay.
I think it might be Christine's.
No, it's right there, there. Oh, yeah, there's nothing that I don't know.
Is it on your side, Christine, maybe, or no?
Click the, what's?
Well, I think you
Yeah, I mean, both of them are
Everything's at 100.
Click that one right there. Oh, okay, that, okay.
I think we've all seen it enough to memorize it.
Oh. Oh.
Oh, oh, oh.
You can hear something.
Man, it's so good to have an IT guy on your team. I can't, yeah.
And then go.
Oh, there we go. I need to clear that.
Hey, Rochester Hills, time to get off that couch and coming out to Blumer Park for the first ever Wake Me Up Before You Go Go Fun Run. We're going back to our 1980s roots, spinning all of the classics from greats like Michael Jackson, Wham!, and even our own Madonna, so sign up today, it's going to be absolutely incredible, coming out and celebrating the city's 40th birthday. We're trying this new thing, sign up on the inter, no, internet. That, coming out of Blumer Park, celebrating the city's 40th, it's going to be totally tubular. Yay!
Yeah, so, first of all, we hope that you'll come out. We have over 200 people registered already, which is great for a first-time event. The other thing I would tell you is that we're definitely not watching it twice, is that there's really a backstory of how that story came apart, came together, and it leads into my final announcement tonight, which is, Maria had this idea to do this 5K run and to make it themed after the 80s because of all this, and she said, here's the link, order this and wear it. And I didn't ask any questions, I ordered it, that's what it was, and I wore it for that video for this particular thing, indicative of the trusting relationship I have with Maria and the things that I'll do basically to support her and the things that she's done to support me. I say that because Maria has shared with me that she is leaving the City of Rochester Hills for new opportunities, new opportunities that
I object.
Obviously will not be great, and we all object, but I'd like Maria to come forward. You know, obviously, she's staying through the state of the city, and we'll have a chance to honor and recognize her there. With all seriousness, I mean, even just the way you saw that she just came up here and sort of figured this out, she has been a really incredible partner, a force in this organization. She's earned the respect of the directors and the team behind her, and her creative mark is seen all across the city, and I wanted to give her an opportunity to be recognized, to thank her publicly, to wish her well, and to maybe share a minute of her thoughts. So Maria?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, President Deal, Vice President Walker, City Council, Mayor Barnett. Yeah, as many of you know, I've worked here for almost 10 years, and this was my dream job. I was super excited about the privilege of working for the city, and we've been able to work on things from building the Innovation Hills Playground to creating Leadership RH, which is our internal leadership program. So this journey has been more rewarding than I think I ever could have imagined. I've been really lucky, because for each of you, I feel like I know you all in different ways, from doing leadership Rochester together to sitting on different boards, prepping for ribbon cuttings, fundraising events, all these different ways where I've been able to see the passion that you all have for being on city council, and, you know, if other people don't see it because they don't have the honor of being able to be in this role, we are so lucky to have a council that is so incredibly passionate and supportive of the things that we do and invest in our team like you do, so I did want to say that. And then, to Mayor Barnett specifically, who didn't know I was going to go into this, I owe a special debt of gratitude, because if you do the math on 10 years, I was 23 years old when I first came here, so I wasn't completely new to government, as I like to say, but I was pretty fresh to government, and he took a chance on a fairly young person who was really, really dedicated and just wanted to be here, and it's given me so many opportunities to learn and to grow and to participate and be at the table and see all these ideas come to reality. So thank you to you, Mayor Barnett, for your mentorship and your friendship and your leadership, because so much of that has profoundly changed my career. So yes. I will take the lessons that I've learned here and the memories with me and I am just so grateful for the remarkable 10 years I've had here at the city of Rochester Hills. So, thank you.
So, before I turn it back over to President Deal for what may be other comments, yeah, I just say that through all the successes that we've had as an organization over the last 10 years, Maria has been a part of each of those. Whether you realize it or not, you know, she has been either the creative force, the organizing force, the encouraging force. And I think you all know that based on your relationships with her and the way you've seen her, the way she's engaged herself with different parts of the community and really taken ownership of this. So, I'm desperately sad that she's, that she's leaving. I've tried to talk her out of it 36 times, promised salaries that I could never deliver. But I know she's excited about her new, her new adventure and wish her well and she'll always be welcome back here. And we will get to see one more, one more feat of her excellence, which is the state of the city, which we're all working on. But thank you for the kind comments, she's become such a dear friend and close friend in our, our lives. We've, we've gone through a lot together personally and professionally and over the last 10 years and has always been wonderfully supportive. So, thank you, Maria, and congratulations on a really great career here.
I don't think you can get up yet. Well, Maria, once again, thank you. Thank you for all of your years of service here to the city. You will not be easily forgotten in no small part because now that I know that you were responsible for putting the mayor in spandex, which is going to haunt my nightmares for many years to come and will be the topic of many therapy sessions, you will not easily be forgotten. But no, in all seriousness, you are a real talent. You have brought, you know, a high level of professionalism, many of the things that we as residents enjoy in the city of Rochester Hills has either been, you know, come up with, you know, in part by you and, or in large part carried out by you. It's, I've always been amazed to, to watch you work within this, within this organization and you're a real talent that will be missed. You are also a genuine wit. I will not get into the details on this, but what I can say is, is that when it comes to your wit and practical jokes, you are unmatched and I will miss you for that in particular greatly. So, once again, you will very much be missed, Ms. Willet. Ms. Vice President Walker.
Thank you, President Deal. Hopefully, we get you one more time. I know there's another meeting and hopefully, we will see you again along with the state of the city. And as I mentioned earlier, I think it's appropriate that there's some event, some party or festivities that we can put together to bid you a fond farewell because you are well-deserved of that. In fact, when we heard that you were leaving, Maggie Bobbitts from the Chamber of Commerce actually informed me the other day of this terrible, terrible news that she shared with me. And we reflected upon the first time that we, we met you and she remembered that it was at a ribbon cutting, at Edible Arrangements over in the strip mall off of Livernoy and Walton Boulevard. And a young, as you said, 23-year-old, fresh-faced, wide-eyed young lady came in with a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of energy and you've been nothing but refreshing for the last 10 years. You've been a wonderful asset to this community, to this organization and to this individual and the council and you will be missed. It's going to be hard to fill your shoes, you've been here for a long time, almost a decade and that's a long time. You've obviously left your mark on this community and we will not soon forget that. Your memories and your legacy will live on. And hopefully, this won't be the last time, we'll have some time to spend and reflect and really wish you a fond farewell and wish you all the best in your endeavors in whatever career, you're going to be wonderful. So, to the benefit of Dearborn and to our loss, congratulations, you will be missed. Thanks, Maria.
Thank you very much. All right, so now we will move on to the, something not nearly as exciting as that or emotional, Attorney's Report. Mr. Chris, what do you have?
Thank you, President Deal. No Attorney's Report this evening.
Very good. Moving on then to new business. Item number 2024-0413, request for purchase authorization, fleet purchase authorization for one new combination sewer truck in the amount of $605,995. Jack Dehaney Company, Northville, Michigan. Mr. Fritz.
You guys aren't standing for the sewer truck?
No? All right.
Well, I feel very sad having to follow that calamitous announcement just, just now. Well, thank you, thank you in getting any President Deal, Mr. Walker, members of council, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Yoon, requesting authorization to purchase a combination sewer truck. These are, you got a picture in your packet, these are a combination truck that has many, many uses. We jet sewer lines, we use them to de-water holes, we use them to do little micro excavations where we need small holes and it's a very important piece of our fleet. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have.
Very good. I don't see any public comment on this item, but I do see a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mr. Carlock. Let's see, all those in favor, oh wait, nope, I have to read it, I'm sorry. Resolve, I don't see any further discussion on this item, resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes the purchase of one new combination sewer truck to Jack Dehaney Company, Northville, Michigan, in the amount of $605,995. Further resolved that the city's acceptance of the proposal and approval of the award of a contract shall be contingent and conditioned upon the parties' entry into and execution of a written agreement acceptable to the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. 2024-0415, request for purchase authorization, facilities, contract blanket purchase order for the City Hall Chiller Replacement Project in the amount of $944,685 with a 10% project contingency in the amount of $94,468.50 for a total not to exceed project amount of $1,039,153.50 to KNS Ventures Inc., Rochester Hills, Michigan. Mr. Fazanco.
Well, good evening, President Deal, Vice President Walker, City Council, Mayor Barnett. The item on the agenda is to replace an outdated existing chiller that's about over 40 years old at City Hall and has now reached the end of its life. So, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Very good. This is a budgeted item and it's within budget. We have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mr. Carlock. I don't see any further discussion or public comment on this item. Resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes a contract blanket purchase order for the City Hall Chiller Replacement Project, KNS Ventures Inc., Rochester Hills, Michigan, in the amount of $944,685 with a 10% project contingency in the amount of $94,468.50 for a total not to exceed project amount of $1,039,153.50 and further authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement on behalf of the city. It is further resolved that the city's acceptance of, of the proposal and approval of the award of a contract shall be contingent and conditioned upon the parties' entry into and execution of a written agreement acceptable to the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And that moves us on to item number 2024-0418, request for purchase authorization, communications, blanket purchase order for wireless cellular services in the amount not to exceed $325,000 through August 31st, 2029, Verizon Wireless, Basking Ridge, New Jersey. Good evening.
There we go.
There you go.
Good evening, President Deal, Mayor Burnett and council. Before you is a request for a three-year extension onto our Verizon contract. It's a national contract deal through NSPO and so our existing services and just a continuation on for three more years with opt-down at any time.
Very good. Thank you very much. I don't know any organization that can go without cell phones these days. We got a motion by Mr. Carlock, seconded by Mrs. Moreland. I don't see any public comment or further council comment on this item, so we'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby waives Section 2-273B the requirements for long-term contracts under Section 2-281, which allows the city council the authority to waive any regulation or procedure pertaining to purchasing deeming it to be in the best interest of the city. It is further resolved that the city, that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes a blanket purchase order for wireless cellular services to Verizon Wireless, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, in the amount not to exceed $325,000 through August 31st, 2029. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And next up, 2024-0429, request for purchase authorization, Parks and Natural Resources, blanket purchase order contract for renovation and construction for passive batting cages at Borden Park in the amount of $383,930.35 with a 10% project contingency in the amount of $38,393.30 for a total not to exceed project amount of $422,323.38, Lang Contractors, Inc., Flint, Michigan. Hello?
Hello. Dennis Andrews, Parks Manager for Parks and Natural Resources. Good evening, President Deal, Vice President Walker, City Council, Mayor Barnett. Over the last three years, the batting cages over at Borden Park have been shut down for a variety of reasons, including seasonal staffing shortages, maintenance issues, the fact that it's past its useful life and difficulty, specifically difficulty finding a vendor to maintain the pitching machine. After researching potential options, you know, we found that technology really hadn't advanced much past our current setup and situation. So, we pivoted and looked for alternative, alternative solution where we could both facilitate comparable batting services as well as, you know, find a setup that wasn't so labor-intensive or so reliant on seasonal staff to operate. And that proposal and that solution is what we're asking for your recommendation or for your approval on tonight. That is to demo the current batting cage setup and transition to a passive batting cage system. This system will allow for more of a versatile and user-friendly solution, should expand the availability for users as well as provide flexibility for future use of the excess park space. Our first shot at designing this project had bids coming back in the $800,000 range. We were able to scale that down to half that cost and we were hoping to utilize the budget surplus from the Avondale paving project to help supplement the budget shortfall. And with that, I'll open up to any questions that you may have.
Very good. That was very well presented. I only have one question then and that is timing. So, how long do we expect, when, when do we expect that they would begin the project and when might we be able to see it completed?
Yeah, so it's a six-week process from start to finish. The hope is to have it completed and ready to go by spring of, of next year. Hopefully, it'll be finished by winter, but it'll be ready to go to be, be batted and pitched on by, by spring.
Perfect, perfect. We have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mr. Carlock. I don't see any public comment or council comments on this item. Resolve that the Rochester Hills City Council hereby authorizes a blanket purchase order for contract, or purchase order, contract for renovation and construction for passive batting cages at Borden Park to Lang Constructors, Inc., Flint, Michigan, in the amount of $383,930.35 with a 10% contingency in the amount of $38,393.30 for a total not to exceed project amount of $422,323.38 and further authorizes the procurement manager to execute an agreement on behalf of the city. It is further resolved that the city's acceptance of the proposal and the approval of the award of a contract shall be contingent and conditioned upon the parties' entry into and execution of a written agreement acceptable to the city. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Um, let's see, there being, I don't see that we have any further business before the Rochester Hills, properly before the Rochester Hills City Council this evening. The next regular meeting of the Rochester Hills City Council will be Monday, September 23rd, 2024 at 7:00 p.m. We have a motion by Mrs. Newbauer, seconded by Mrs. Moreland tonight. All those in favor of adjournment say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Nobody's opposed.
Very good, we are adjourned. Have a great week, everybody.